In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Now that was a beautiful text in the Bible, especially in the Book of Wisdom, but in the entire Bible. That's a wonderful prayer. That's how we come to know, associate Solomon to the whole wisdom tradition in the Bible. That is how Solomon's name was slapped on even this particular book that we are going to study, which is particularly named "The Wisdom of Solomon." But the entire wisdom tradition, all the books we have been reading, the entire wisdom tradition, Solomon is known as the inspiration behind it, of this tradition. Because for those of you who go to morning, daily masses, this week we've been reading about Solomon's wisdom. And yesterday, I think we read something about the Queen of Sheba. The queen from Africa visited Solomon and stayed there for days and learned a lot from Solomon. And tradition says that they had an affair and she came home pregnant. The Bible doesn't say that, but we have evidence to show for it. That is why it's interesting. We have evidence today that in Ethiopia, in those areas, there are what we call the African Jewish people. They call them the Phalasheites or the Phalaschads. The Phalaschads, and if you go to Jerusalem today, if you go to Israel, you will see many of the people who go to the temple to pray, many of them are Africans. And they are black people, but who are Jewish people. I think in the 1970s, the Jewish government decided to repatriate many of the black Jews, but the United Nations stepped in and guaranteed their rights because they claimed their ancestry through the Queen of Sheba to Solomon. And so this is what we know today. But so we are going to learn, we're going to say something about the Book of Wisdom. So again, I want to mention here, I want to caution you that there's a particular book called the Book of Wisdom in the entire wisdom tradition. There's a particular book called the Book of Wisdom. And to distinguish it, we call it the Book of Wisdom of Solomon. And so what we are going to do today, how we study this book, is that we are going to begin to talk about an introduction. We're going to have an introduction where we talk about the author and where the book was written, and in what language the book was written, and to who the book was written, okay, this particular book. Because all the books of the Bible, always keep this in mind, all the books of the Bible were written not to us, who live today in 2022. You know, it was written to the original audience to each of the books. And it's always important, if you know who the book was written to, this is how we do interpretation of a particular text. If you know who it was written to, what was going on in the person's life, then you will understand something to understand that, what you are reading. Because if you don't know who it was written to, you can misjudge, you may take the thing out of context, okay, out of context. You have to ask, what was happening? To whom was this book written? What was happening in the life of those people? What made the author write to those people? And what was he trying to achieve by writing to them? What was he trying to achieve in them? So those are the questions we ask when we want to interpret Scripture for ourselves, before we apply it in our lives. We got to interpret it first, okay? An interpretation means finding out what it meant to the first audience, the first people who received it. So that's what we do in the introduction, and then we will talk about the goals. What was he trying to achieve by writing this book, "The Wisdom of Solomon"? What was the intentions? What goals are there? Then the fourth thing we'll be doing, the next thing we'll be doing is, we'll talk about the characteristic of the book. How is the book, what are some of the characteristics of the book? In this way, we are asking, what is the style? What is the style by which it's written? Then again, you have to know the style of a particular text. And the style, if you know the style of the text, you can begin to understand certain words because the style tells about how the person is using certain words. So for example, the word "love", love might not mean the same if it is found in a song. Okay, so a song is written in a particular way. And then, so a song is a style, another style of writing. A way of writing a legal document is also different. A legal document has a different shape. And the words that are used in it, a particular word can be used in a legal document that will mean different from how it is put in a song, or a riddle, or a proverb. You know, so many times, it's very important to know the style. And we are going to do, in this particular book, "The Wisdom of Solomon", the style gives it away. If you know, if you have the style in the background, you will be able to see some of the words when you're reading from "The Wisdom of Solomon". And then next week, we will come and talk about the theological message. The message of, what is the message that this book seeks to teach? And we will spend all of next week's session on the theology of "The Book of Wisdom". So let us go on with our introduction. And as I always, any time I'm starting any book, to study any book in the Bible, I always want to revise, just to make sure that you know my approach. In this Bible study, what I call adult Bible study, you realize I am not taking texts and reading it and then trying to break the text down for you, how to apply the text in your life. Instead, I am talking about the book itself because I wanted you to know the book and to know how to handle that book, and to know what to expect from that book. The interpretation and the application of individual messages, individual texts, you will have to do that. But if you know the book very well, you know what this book is about, then you can read from any part of it and you will get a sense of what the book is saying. So my adult, this is what we call adult, the adult in adult Bible study is not to spell out everything that is going to be applicable to your life. Instead, we teach about the book and teach about certain overarching themes, the context. So you don't take whatever you read, you don't take it out of context. You always read within the context of the book. So we want to know who, what was the name and the author? The name and the author of the book. The name is called "The Book of Wisdom of Solomon", which is a translation from the Hebrew, the Hebrew. The Hebrew calls it, but the Greek, the Greek name, the Greeks call it "The Book of Wisdom", okay, but the Hebrews called it "The Book of Wisdom of Solomon", the Hebrews want to make sure that nobody confuses this book to be a book of wisdom of Egypt or wisdom of somewhere else. They want to tie it to Israel. They want to know that this is Israel's property, Israel's wisdom. Because the book is written in Greek. Now, Greek is not the language of Israelites. Greek is a colonial language. It was forced on them. But they didn't speak Greek. They spoke Hebrew, okay, Hebrew. So most of the books in the Old Testament are written in Hebrew, but some of the books are written in Greek. Although these are ideas, they are Hebrew ideas. They are Hebrew culture and Hebrew traditions, but they are written in Greek. So how did it come about that they were written in Greek? So we know that the book itself, when you are reading it, you come to find that it was not written by Solomon himself. Solomon did not pen the book. Solomon did not write that book. Although it is called "The Wisdom of Solomon", Solomon did not write it because when we read it, we see that the person that wrote it was living in Egypt. The person was living in Egypt, not in Israel. Solomon didn't go to live in Egypt. And for that matter, if the person is living in Egypt, in Alexandria, Alexandria, the person was living in Alexandria, so we know that it is not Solomon. And therefore, and that city, the city of Alexandria, that came up not in Solomon's time. It was there, but it wasn't developed like in Solomon's time. So Solomon was not that person. And therefore, we know that it was somebody who made himself or spoke in the name of Solomon. So the text that we just read, the text we read says that it was Solomon who was praying to God and asking for wisdom from God. But we know that Solomon did not write that, okay, because we know that the origin of the book is in Alexandria. Now, some scholars say there is this guy in the top, in the top of that, in the PowerPoint there, Philo, Philo, they thought Philo of Alexandria. There was this guy, historian, an ancient historian who was called Philo, who has written a lot of histories outside of the Bible. But this is a history that you can, that fills in what is missing in the Bible, okay? The Bible doesn't have consistent history of everything perfect. So you have a lot of authors, ancient authors, who have also penned and written histories alongside the stories of the Bible. So some people thought that this guy called Philo of Alexandria, he was the one who wrote this book. Exactly who wrote "The Wisdom of Solomon", we don't know. We don't know. So, but we say "Wisdom of Solomon" because the person spoke in the name, as if he is Solomon, okay, he cast himself like Solomon with wisdom. So we say the origin is that it was written in Greek and in Alexandria around 100 B.C. This is the time that we found a huge number of Israelites living in Alexandria, in Egypt, what we call the Jewish diaspora. The Jewish diaspora, if you say American diaspora, you mean Americans who are not living on their land, but they are living in somebody else's country. They are American diaspora. Ghanaian diaspora is a Ghanaian who is living outside of Ghana, in other places. So the word diaspora means to scatter, scatter or disperse all around. So any nation's diaspora is the nationals of that nation who live outside of that nation. So Israelites who were living in Egypt. And in Egypt, Greek, Alexandria especially, the name Alexandria came from the Greek, the Greek king and the Greek emperor who conquered the whole of that Middle East. So his name was given to some of the cities. And the Egyptian city called Alexandria was given a, Alexander the Great. That city was named after Alexander the Great, who conquered that area. So we say that city was occupied by a lot of Jewish people. Now, because they were living in Alexandria that spoke Greek, they were Jewish people, but they spoke no Hebrew. They spoke Greek. Therefore, we will see why this book was written in Greek because he wants to reach, he wants to teach his own people their traditions, their wisdom. Just like the wisdom of Ben Sira, remember when we read that book? That book is like this book, okay? The wisdom of Ben Sira is like this book. The intention was to reach the Jewish people who are living in a foreign land. But in that foreign land, they have lost their language. They spoke Greek. So it makes sense to speak to them in Greek, to write to them in Greek. So it's a Jewish diaspora. Now, when you go to the New Testament, you will see references. The New Testament knew this book. The New Testament is aware of "The Wisdom of Solomon", "The Book of Wisdom of Solomon". In Romans, chapter 1, verse 18 through 32, Paul talks about idolaters, people who worship idols, people who worship other gods than the god of Israel, okay, and warns them, he warns those who worship other gods. So the New Testament also is aware of the tradition of "The Book of Wisdom". So also you see in Ephesians, Ephesians, chapter 6, verses 11 through 17, it talks about virtues. And virtues, these are virtues, Hebrew virtues, the Hebrew virtues that are written in Greek, okay? And it says, "The wisdom here is known as the armor of God." So wisdom that you put on yourself is like an armor that you wear so that you can go for a battle. And that text especially talks about justice or righteousness as a breastplate. So armor, the armor of God has different things. You have helmet, you have a sword, you have a shield, you have boots, you have all kinds of things, and then you have a breastplate. And so Ephesians talks about justice as the breastplate, is the armor of God, okay? And so that when you are wearing justice, you are armed. You are armed spiritually, okay, you are armed. So the New Testament is aware of "The Book of Wisdom". Now let us talk about the goals. Why did he write this book? Why did pseudo-Solomon, whoever he is who wrote the book, we call him pseudo, or not fake, but for lack of a better term, you can say, how do they say that, personifying somebody? Or like somebody who is not a soldier, but acts like a soldier and wears something like that. Somebody who wants to assume the image of something he is not.
Is mercenary is one of the persons?
Ah, no, mercenary is, but this is like, in Greek, they call it pseudo, which is, which is not, the person himself is not, is not what he is, but he is assuming the role.
An impersonator?
Impersonator, yeah, 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 okay. Solomon impersonator, impersonator, okay. So why did he write the book? He wrote the book in order to achieve a synthesis. Synthesize is to bring two cultures together, two different cultures. Because whether you like it or not, if you're living in somebody's town or somebody's country, you cannot totally bring your culture pure and simple and keep it pure in that land. You cannot do it. It's impossible. Your children are going to go to school and they are going to bring home different attitudes, different cultures. They're going to bring in, they're going to learn different ways of doing things. You will never be able to keep pure your culture. So in the end, you will find yourself mixing, mixture. You will find yourself putting, if you want to survive, you will have to mix. If you don't mix, your culture is going to die because you are not living on your land, on your own land or on your own place. When you go to Rome, they say you do what the Romans do, okay? So he saw that, he saw that his own people, who are Hebrews, Jewish people, are not living in their Jewish land, they are living in Greek land. And it's not just about language. Language is culture. Language is part of culture. Because in certain languages, for instance, there is no word for, like in my language, there is no word for uncle because we don't deal with uncles, we don't deal with the laterals. We deal with father, mother, children, grandchildren. That's the way we go, okay? So my mother's sister is my mother also. Or my junior mother, if she is younger than my mother, is my junior mother. If it's senior to my mother, she's my senior mother, okay? So that's the way we talk. So there will be no word for cousin, you know, so that affects the culture too. It means that if I come to you and I come with this beautiful lady and I said, hey, that's my, that's my sister, that could be my cousin, but you know, but you will think, oh, it's my blood sister, okay? Because over here, we have the word cousin and other things. So if I say sister, you might think it's my sibling, but it's not. Because every lady in my entire extended family, every woman in there, if she is my, she is in that level, she's a child of my uncle, for instance, she is my sister. She is not my cousin. We don't call them cousins. We call them sisters and brothers. So you have sisters and brothers and fathers and mothers and grandmothers and so on, okay? So that shows the relationship, the way we do relationships is different because the language, so the language is there to back that. So language is culture. So he spotted, he saw that his own people are living in a foreign land and they are going to, they are mixing things, they are seeing things in a mixture. That's the way they see things. So he wrote the book to reach them, so they can understand. Because if he wrote, if he writes it in pure Hebrew, Jewish, he will lose them. They are not able, they won't understand it because they are diasporic and diaspora, you have to necessarily mix things up. You see things in a mixture. You see things in a, what I have there, the modus operandi is intercultural, not monocultural, not multicultural, not even multicultural. What we say multicultural is that you have different cultures that are all there pure. All of them are pure. They are not interacting to each other. They are all pure in themselves. Nobody is talking to anybody. Everybody is keeping their culture pure, okay? That is multicultural, okay? But and then there's what we call monoculture. Monoculture means we iron out, everybody loses their culture and we have just one culture, one culture. Or one person's culture dominates everyone and becomes the culture. Then there is what you call intercultural. Intercultural means you have different cultures and they all talking to each other and they are all mixing and producing new things, new culture. They are producing different new cultures. Everybody can find themselves, they find their culture in the mixture, okay? So that's the kind of things, they are talking about hybridity, they are talking about syncretism, a word that I will come later on to explain. Syncretism is beliefs, putting beliefs together, different beliefs together, okay? And then adaptation, adaptation. So this is what he's trying to achieve. He's trying to achieve a synthesis. That's his goal. Because it's only in the synthesis that his people will understand, okay? And then, so that has to do with his audience. The audience, the book, so he wants to reach his audience. So the book aims at reaching Jewish believing people and pagans sometimes. So you guys, these things are mixed up over there, okay? They're Jewish people, some of their children are getting married to pagans. And so you have no other choice but deal with pagan and Hebrew things mixed up, okay? So then, and then he was writing to outsiders, so his writings, sometimes he's writing to outsiders. And when he's writing to outsiders, he's teaching them theology about God and things like that. When he's writing to the insiders, he's actually trying to convince them and persuade them, okay? So those who are insiders need to be persuaded. Those who are outsiders, they need to be taught. They need to be taught, okay? So that's why we say, you say theology to outsiders and apology to insiders. Now let us quickly go through, this is, this is where, what I want us to look at very, very carefully. If we don't finish, next week we can come to finish it. But I think we can finish now. Because this part is a little bit, I'm sorry, I'm just using some of these words that are philosophical, but I'll try my best to break it down so we know exactly what we're talking about. So the Greek style of writing, okay, the Greek style of writing, because this book is written in a Greek style of writing. And what do we mean by Greek style of writing? What are some of the things you want to see to know that writing? And mind you, these things can tell you what a particular text means when you're reading it, okay? When you're reading a text, if you have any of these things in mind, they can help you to understand what you're reading. So that style is different from the Jewish Hebrew style. It's a style that is written in a kind of logic, logically, okay? In the Greek style, if you are not logical, nobody understands you. If you are going to speak, you have to be logical, which means you have to give the premise, the first premise, the second premise, and then your conclusion. If you just go and shoot out their conclusion, everybody will be looking at you and like... One time, Paul, Paul went to the Areopagus, which is a place where the Greek people in Athens, they gather. The wise people gather, the philosophers gather, and they argue. They argue against each other. Paul went there to preach. And then he was telling them about the resurrection of the dead. And they were like, what are you talking about? They're like, we would like to hear from you again later about this resurrection of the dead. You are talking cuckoo. Nobody believes that. Nobody believes in the resurrection of the dead, okay? You have to actually prove, prove that there is a resurrection of the dead, you know? So Paul had a difficult time himself with the Greeks. So they talk about logic. It got to be logical. Something that is true, to be able to be true, you have to establish... It got to be logical, something that is true, to be able to be true, you have to establish logic. If it's not logical, it is not true, okay? You can't just come with claims. When you claim something, you must have the reason eh evidence for, evidence that backs the reason and you must have a warrant that ties the reason to the claim. I mean, that's, that's, that's what is true. So sometimes certain, certain things are not true, but if you can put it in logical, you can get away with it. That's, that's the thing. And that's what our lawyers do when they go to court. I mean eh, the lawyer that can be very logical, who will have reason, who will give the claim, has reason, has evidence that backs the reason and then, and then deduces the conclusion from it. Hey, you can get away with murder. So eh, so that's the kind of peep things eh 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 content, culture that, that this book was written in, that's the style. And then you have, they also tend to list, list the vices, things that you are, you are not encouraged to do. They can list them eh in a kind of list form. You shouldn't do this, these are some of the vices that you have to run away from. That's a way of writing eh eh, and it's written in generic forms. So a kind of, a kind of eh eh explained eh, explained in, 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 in lines. All the things that you shouldn't do. Eh you can also find in this style of writing eh virtues, virtues. What are, what are the good things to do? What are the actions that you need to take? Virtues are deduced, again, logic here, yeah? You, you state, you state the general thing and you deduce from it what you are to do, okay? A deduction, a reasoning in a deductive way. Eh so eh eh virtues come or they flow from knowledge. So in Greek terms eh, to know something means to act, okay? Action is deduced from knowledge, okay? So you know the thing first and you deduce the action, what to do, eh what I know, then what I do, okay? Eh eh, so that's the way it reasons in this book. And then also eh you have attributes, eh they have attributes or characteristics and the divine providence. So eh eh, what are some of the eh things about God, for instance? And what are the things that God does, okay? So, so who is God and what, what does God do? So they always like talking about eh making God a metaphysical principle. God is a metaphysical principle. So when we say metaphysical, is eh 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 that word eh sounds a big word, well, it's just matter, beyond. Matter is beyond, beyond the physical, okay? They don't talk about the physical. So the physical thing is like a table, for instance. When you're talking about this book, you are not talking about this. They rather talk about the idea of the book, idea of the book eh. What is the idea of the book? The idea of a table. But the table itself is there, the physical table. But they are always talking the abstract eh, they're in abstraction. What is the idea of a table? A table is something that eh trying to kind of eh 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 put it in an abstract terms. That's the kind of way they talk, that's the kind of way they write. So the physical table itself is called the accident eh. The physical, the, the book itself that I'm holding, the physical thing is the accident. And then the essence of the book, you know, the idea of the book is what is, is real for them. That's when they are talking, when they are talking, they, they are not talking eh physical things. They are talking abstractions eh eh. And so, and so this book is very philosophical, it's a philosophy book, okay? The Wizard of Solomon is a philosophy book. And, 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 and it will teach us more about, about how we can create this knowledge and deduce from it what we should do as human beings. So wisdom, so for them, wisdom penetrates and pervades. Well, because it's the idea, the idea can go into different places. So they believe that, that by writing in this way, the wisdom of God in Israel does not stay in the temple in Israel, in Jerusalem. That wisdom can go to the diaspora in Egypt. That wisdom can go anywhere, it can go to any culture, it can be expressed eh. So wisdom here is the idea. So if it's an idea, the idea can take on different clothing. It can take on Greek clothing, it can take on eh eh American clothing if you wish. Because it's the idea, the ideal is not the accident, it's not the concrete, concrete. The concrete is the eh eh, this is one of the reasons why they like talking about the ideas rather than this, rather than the book itself or the table itself. Because the table itself locks the idea. Eh eh because the, the physical, you can't change it anymore, the physical locks the idea, okay? But the idea is supposed to be free, free to be able to go all around, to be expressed in different ways. So the idea is richer than the concrete. That like the, the word concrete, when you set a concrete, that's a structure, it's unchangeable, okay? You lock the idea. So that is why they prefer to talk ideals instead, not concrete, yeah? Not physical stuff, okay? And you will have something like that with, with the New Testament, with Jesus' teaching eh as spiritual, as spiritual, okay? So that the spirit can go anywhere. So wisdom eh, I told you already, wisdom is the spirit of God. And the spirit of God goes wherever it wants. The spirit of God can go to Ghana, can be in Ghanaian eh culture, can be in Americans, can be in Israel, it can go anywhere it wants, okay? All right eh eh, Vicky, do you have a question? Oh, okay eh, your hand, is that your hand up? Oh, okay, okay, all right, okay. So let's move on eh, the next ones eh is that, so, so in this particular book, you will, in this style of writing, you will find schools of thoughts eh. Different, you can find different schools of thought. You can find like eh some of you who did philosophy in college, you came across eh the Middle Ages eh Plato eh. Plato is one of the Greek philosophers. So Platonism is a lot of eh way Plato eh Plato thought. Eh people who think in that way eh they, they form a school of Platonism. And in Platonism, Plato also thinks about things like that. He thinks about the ideal world and this particular world, this physical world has another world that is its ideal. Okay, so this world is not, this world is the, is the concrete of the ideal world that has more poten- potentials than what we have here, okay? And that has more beauty, that has more, does that sound, does that sound like something that Jesus would? It sounds like Christianity, right? Heaven, right? We talk about heaven eh eh, I, I for one, I preach all the time. Heaven is the best zip code you can ever find. So when we die, we just check out of one zip code and go to the best zip code. That's Platonism, I, I, I touché, okay? I stand accused as a Pla- a Platonist, okay? Eh so they think like that, they talk about the essence of the thing, not the actuals. The essence of the thing, not the actuals. The actuals lock them up, so they don't like the actuals. They, they, they like more of the, of the essence so that they can continue to, to, to move and blow and give life. Now, that is a Middle Age school eh the Middle Ages. But in the modern philosophy, in modern philosophy, modern philosophy moved beyond that. Modern philosophy likes Aristotle. Aristotle came after Plato, okay? Aristotle talks about existential existence of things, okay? Existence of things, eh hey, come on, I want to, I want to live, okay? Our, what is, what is eh practical, okay? Eh what is living? Eh and so, so you have modern philosophers who are, who, who went beyond eh this idea of ideal world and the physical world. They want to say everything as existence eh eh eh. So eh eh, the Plato, Platonists are always essentialists and this book is about essentialists. They are deductive, as I told you, they are deductive in their reasoning. They begin from high up ideas and then break it down to, to concreteness. So Platonism says that the ideal world influences the actual world. The ideal world is superior to the actual world. And the farther you are from God, the weaker the influence is eh. The, the farther you are, so if you are eh eh, if you are far away from the ideal world, if your life is just about this world and it's things and you are so attached to this world and you are so far away, you don't have any characteristics of the ideal world in you, then you are far from God and you are weak, okay? If you are so attached to the things of this world, so much that, that you don't have any relation to the ideal world, then you are weaker and you are farther from God, okay? There is here too, you can find Stoicism eh Stoic, the Stoics eh, the Stoics eh 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 in this book, the Stoics are people who, who say that you become good when you do good things, you are not looking to be rewarded. When you do good things, you just do it in order to feel noble, nobe- eh nobility, yeah? To feel special, to feel that you are royal, that you are eh magnanimous, that's all. That's all it is, not some kind of other reward like tit for tat eh. But do good just because you are, you want to be seen as a, a royal or eh 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 a noble person, okay? It is noble to do good, simple, that's it. No, you're not expecting something else eh from it. Eh eh, so you will find that idea, that school of thought also in this writing. Then there is epicureanism, epicu- epicurus, epicureanism, this is more about pleasure eh. Eh you, 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 you do things for pleasure eh. When the pleasure, when they give you pleasure eh eh, the, 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 the good thing or what is wise is what gives you pleasure eh. You, there are certain parts of it, of the book that you see that, that also express. School, another school of thought, okay? Eh then also eh, there are images of the cult of Isis or Isis. Now Isis, I'm not talking about the Islamic fundamental group eh. No, the I, that name was given to that group eh. But in the ancient world, in Africa, in Egypt, there was a religion called the Cult of Isis. And Isis was a goddess eh, was a goddess of that religion. And that religion permeated that whole region, even Rome. Rome was filled with the Cult of Isis. And Isis, a lot of, a lot of things from the Isis religion eh devotion to Isis was bought in, was, was borrowed by eh by Christianity. A lot of Isis practices made their way into Christianity, okay? So the Isis, Isis cult, like the Madonna, the whole idea of the Madonna, but because this goddess and it's older, this religion is older than Judaism, it's older than Christianity, okay? Eh it's ancient Egypt, Egyptian civilization is older than eh than the Hebrew, than Abraham, okay? So eh, but this goddess, her image is always carrying a baby nursing at the breast. That's her image. It's an ancient Egyptian religion. And the whole concept of, of eh eh eh, the, the, the story there is that her husband eh, her, her, not her husband, but her friend called Osiris, a male, died. And when he died, she killed herself and went to that netherworld to redeem him and brought him back into life and married him. There is, there is a whole story, I mean, I thought this, this course, I mean, ancient religions in Holy Names University is so interesting to see the, the correlation, how the Christians eh talk about the resurrection. You remember when we are praying our creed, we say, he descended into hell, okay? We say that, that Jesus, when Jesus died, he descended into hell, why? He went there because those who died before he got here, those people are there, they didn't know Jesus Christ. So he went down there and redeemed them and brought them to, 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 to new life. He went there to baptize, that's why we say that all the time, he descended into hell. A lot of people don't understand why we say that. Some people take offense, why are we talking about hell in a, in a church? You know, but that is the, the, the thing. But all these ideas were influenced by ancient religions. We borrowed, Christianity borrowed from a whole lot of eh religions that were there before Christianity, okay? So the eh, so you find this in already, you find this idea eh, the ideas of eh the cult of Isis, the religion of Isis in eh eh, in, in eh Wisdom of Solomon, okay? Eh so when you are reading and you come across things like that, you know, you know why. Then eh, so this is what we are going to do next week. So we are going to look at these things and see, and take some of the texts and try to find out eh, to explore the writing style, how the writing style helps the author to achieve his goal for writing. That is to synthesize and to reach his fellow eh people. We're going to talk about what the writer means by, by wisdom and, and what the writer thinks about the afterlife and all kinds of, what the writer thinks about death. To him, what is death and, and, and things like that. That will be next week. So I'm going to stop right here. Yeah, we got a question. Why would he write as if his words are Solomon's? Was that a style of the times as well? Did the people he was writing to understand that it was not actually Solomon's words that they were reading? Okay, so before he wrote, before the author wrote, there was already the wisdom tradition of Israel. There was that tradition, that culture. And that culture was already associated to Solomon, okay? Solomon was the inspiration, is the godfather of wisdom or Israelite wisdom tradition. So before he wrote, before he wrote that, so the author knew that. So that is why he made eh eh, this is, this is the way, this is the way that books were accepted by different communities. It is that if you write the book, you don't put your name on it because nobody knows you, who you are. You want to find some giant. That's the way by biblical books are, are, are named. Almost all the names that you find on the biblical books are not the authors, they were not the authors. Isaiah didn't write all those things. Isaiah did not. If you know Isaiah very well, Isaiah spans a lifetime of about five hundred years. There is first Isaiah. There is first Isaiah, a group of chapters that belong to, to a number of years. Then there's another group and then there's a third group. So there's, Isaiah is studied in three different authors' name, okay? Isaiah alone is studied in three, uh, Primo Isaiah, uh, 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 what is this, what is second, okay, I forgot the second. And then there's Tito Isaiah, okay? So, so, so names of books in the Bible, get it from now. It's, 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 if you see a name, Matthew, that doesn't mean Matthew wrote, Matthew actually took a pen and wrote that, Matthew did not, okay? Matthew is an inspiration behind the theme of the book. So they slap these names on them so that, so that they, they will become acceptable by the, the, the people that they are, uh, uh, writing to. So yes, the audience knew that. Uh, Father, you mentioned that in your country, there was no such thing as referring to someone as cousin, but rather as brother or sister. Is this the same as in Aramaic when people refer to Jesus' brothers as, thank you, thank you? Yes, yes, uh, yes ma'am, or yes sir, uh. That's, that's exactly, our cultures are, uh, our traditional cultures, many traditional cultures and America, you know, in the United States, no one's culture rules anything, is the law that, that rules in America. America is a melting pot, okay? It's a modern, modern, uh, culture. But if you go to different places like Ireland, uh, the, eh, eh, you go to, uh, uh, what's the, what's the Irish, Irish, uh, traditional, uh, culture called?
Celtic?
Celtic, Celtic, no, was it Celtic? There's another word.
Gaelic.
Gaelic, Gaelic, the Gaelic culture, for example, the Gaelic, uh. The Gaelic, they have all kinds of traditions, traditional things, and you know, uh, uh. So, so if you go to my home too, it's the same thing, the traditional culture. They have a story about how the world was created. What we read in Genesis in the Bible is the Israelite traditional idea about how the world came to be. Not, not, not everywhere, if you go to India, eh, eh, the Buddhists have a whole creation story. Egyptians have creation story, they were, they were creation stories before Genesis was written. And those who, Israelites who wrote the Genesis creation story, they took ideas from, from, from people around them and they wrote their own too, okay? So, so yes, uh, traditional cultures, many traditional cultures are like, they look like the Israelite culture, like the, the way we marry, marriage, for instance. Uh, the way we marry traditionally in my home is exa- almost exactly the same as how the Israelite marry. Uh, it takes a whole long time and you have to work in your, your father-in-law's farm. Uh, you have to go and do knockings, you have to go three different times. Even in some of the times, they will throw water at you and sack you and chase you away. You know, so, so that's the kind of thing we're talking about here, okay? African-Americans slaves had a strong faith in God, Jesus Christ, because they did not have material wealth. Jews that suffer in the Holocaust, Holocaust? So when a group is suffering, their faith is traditionally stronger. Uh, so, so the Jewish people also were diasporic people. African-Americans are diasporic people too. So you see, you see how, how African-American culture survived. There is this question, there's a book that is written by an author called Gwendolyn Middlehall. Gwendolyn Middlehall wrote as a book about why the culture of the slave is the culture, the culture of the slave who was weak, who was oppressed. The slave's culture and food and music, those are the ones that survived in the South, in New Orleans. The slave's food and cuisine until that survived. How did that happen? How did that happen that the one who is oppressed, who had no voice, who was a slave, his culture and music and language of their culture, that's the one that survived. It is because, and also Gwendolyn Middlehall answers the question and says, it was because they were mixing things up. They mi- they didn't keep their culture to their, themselves, but they allowed their culture to mix with European culture, to this culture, to Mexican culture. Then put them all together, you, you know the food, the food that is called gumbo? Gumbo is like that, it's a mixture, uh, the leftover food, the bone and the this and the that and that, they put them all together and put spices in them and boiled them, uh, and became a soup. And it's very expensive now in New Orleans, very expensive food, eh, eh, in New Orleans. So it is that kind of culture that survived. Survivor, they survived because they didn't attach themselves to some kind of purity of culture, but they mixed things up, uh. That's what this book is trying to do, okay? Synthesizing, uh, 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 things. And yes, faith, so their faith became stronger because they were mixing things up. Creole, that, that, that's the name, the word Creolo means a mixture of an African culture and a European culture, that's Creole. So Creolo, Creolization is a whole theme in, in.
Put on your headphones because the person's trying to talk.
Oh, okay. So Creolization is a theme in studying, studying, uh, diaspora, studies of any diaspora. So as I said from the beginning, if you are in the diaspora, you can keep a pure culture or your culture pure. It's impossible to do that, you have to mix. If you don't want to mix, your culture will die. Yeah. Ah. Yes, yes, yes. Yeah. Uh huh. Yes. Yes. Yes, and, and, eh, eh, and I agree a hundred percent. The only thing I want to add to that is that so the African-Americans, uh, or black people in the United States who were oppressed, they turned to the spiritual world for, 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 for satisfaction. And they placed all their trust in the spiritual world, but they still wanted to transform this world, okay? Because, eh, this, they didn't, they didn't like pivot, pivot to the spiritual world and just stayed there. But they pivoted to the spiritual world in order to gain strength to change this place, this physical world, to change it, to make it look like the spiritual world, okay? So, so, so yes, uh, they, they became very strong, their faith, eh, 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 it's like, they don't want to accept their thing about, when a slave master will say, oh, don't worry, you are suffering in this world, in heaven you will be good. No, 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 I want to, I want, I want to taste it from here. I want to, I want to change, that, that brings about the work of justice. Justice is that you change the structure by using the spiritual world, okay? So, so I am not advocating for Platonism purely. I'm not saying that we should accept what Wisdom of Solomon is doing uh, by separating the spiritual world from the physical world. No, African-Americans want to join them, put them together and let, and let that, that, uh, uh, let this world be a just world and look like heaven, okay? Okay? Exactly, exactly, exactly. Thank you very much. Okay, so I'm going to see you all, uh, next week and we will talk about the theology, uh, eh, eh, and something that we can take home uh, when we are reading, uh, the Wisdom of Solomon. And I would like you to read, uh, Wisdom, Chapter Three. The Book of Wisdom, Chapter Three. And this one, we read it a lot, especially Chapter Three, Verse One through Nine. Every funeral, people like this reading for funerals, okay? The souls of the just are in the hand of God and no torment shall touch them. They seem in the eyes of the foolish to be dead, but they are alive, okay? So that's a beautiful, uh, uh, reading. So God bless you all, uh, have a good night.